The great state of Tennessee in this honorable place. Please remain standing as Brother Cal Adams leads us into prayer and after that we'll pledge our nation's flag. Brother Cal.
Let us pray. Most gracious Lord, heaven and father, what a privilege it is to join together tonight. Father, we thank you for these men and these women who give of themselves, Lord, to help conduct the business of this county. God, I pray that you bless us. Lord, help us to do the best that we can to serve you and to serve others. Lead us now, we pray, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Let us pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
All right, looks like we got a full house here tonight. So let me explain something before before we go ahead and get started here. We have two county commission meetings right now. First was going to be a special call on filling a school board vacancy. We'll have to gavel out of that meeting to go into our full regular scheduled county commission meeting. So at this time, if you've not voted, please go ahead and press it. So I've got full call. Our business for night, special business for tonight is fill the district two vacancy of the Rome County School Board created by the resignation of Shane Best. I'd open it up for public nomination.
Make a motion.
All right, I got two, Commissioner Henderson and Commissioner Ferguson.
Go ahead, Greg.
I'd like to nominate Darren Tapp from Harriman to replace Shane Best for school board.
I second it.
All right. Any discussion, any debate? All right, are any other nomi-
Are you going to allow the public to address?
Any other nominations from the public? All right. Any discussion on debate on the one individual?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to remind us that last year in March, we brought a resolution that that special call meetings and would go right in combined with our regular meeting so that we didn't have we didn't have two two separate pages.
But well, you're just talking referring to the pay, but by legality and by statute, we have to have two separate meetings.
Right, but I'm just saying, we agreed that.
I do, yeah, understand.
Just want to make sure we remember that.
All right, yes, got that. All right, any other discussion on Mr. Tapp being appointed to fill the vacancy on the school board?
Can we hear from him? Is he here for that?
I think he is. I seen somebody with a Tapp shirt on.
Yes, sir. I'm Baron Tapp and I would like to serve on the school board for the remainder of whatever it is until I have to run to be elected for the Harriman district.
All right. Thanks, sir. Any questions to Mr. Tapp?
We appreciate your willingness to serve other than the capacity that you normally serve in.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Would you like to commit to a statement of which has the best high school football team in Rome County or the best high school?
I'd rather not say.
I teach high school football, so I'd rather not.
Yeah, very well. Commissioner Henson.
I might just just kind of tell us kind of why you thought this would be a good fit for you and what do you think that you could bring to this county and with your district?
Well, being from Harriman, which I am, I've, gosh, I've coached football over there for 24 years. I coached girls' basketball for 16. I coached high school baseball for 18. I'm currently the middle school coach at Harriman, but it just makes me proud to be able to honor, you know, my community and serve in the capacity to maybe help the Rome County school system out now that Harriman's part of it and just be a part of what goes on there at the school.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
All right, I have a motion to cease nominations if there's no other-
I have a motion.
All right, motion second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Tapp?
Mr. Tapp, at one time he was a resource officer also or?
A long time ago.
A long time ago, that's what I was thinking. So appreciate you for that, too.
All right. Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll conduct a vote. Harriman, do you have that electronic?
No, we'll do that by voice. Bering.
Yes.
Brackett.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Duff.
Yes.
Ferguson.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Hendrickson.
Still fine here.
Yes.
Hooks.
Yes.
Kirby.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
All right. Mr. Tapp, congratulations. Look forward to spinning. All right, at this time, we're going to end the special call meeting. And at this time, we're going to enter into, we're going to do the same protocol. We're going to enter into our regular scheduled county commission meeting. All right. First up, I need a motion to approve the, let me know when you're ready.
Go ahead.
All right. Need a motion to approve the September 8th, 2025 meetings. Correspondence, I'm sorry. Motion by, Gann, second by Duff. Mr. Gann.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Duff.
Nothing.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, madam clerk. Motion carries fifteen. All right. List of, yeah, except committee reports and correspondence. Mr. Berry, Commissioner Duff, motion by Berry, Commissioner Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Report number three. We just need to add that under open comments, a motion was made. We're laced up. The chairman, Commissioner Hester nominated very few secretary, segmented by bracket, and passed, so we left that out. So we just need to add that in that report. Number eight, we'll have we'll have a resolution later from the OES for ambulance services on the on the seat of number three. So we'll have that a little later. And number 12, just congratulations to Principal Tiffany Jameson and first and second grade classes of Midtown Elementary for participating in Money Week 2025. Looks like we're going to get back to teaching our kids how to handle some money and stuff. And that was sponsored by the Tennessee's Financial Leadership Commission, partnership with University of Tennessee. So congratulations to them. Number 15, Madam Budget Director, any any problems in sight of that report?
Well, we're still monitoring. The ambulance is fine.
Right.
We hope that, yeah, we have a face for right now.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, thank you on that one. And number 16 was was our, our report from from the Alliance and we'll get we'll get that. We look forward to that report. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Duff?
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, madam clerk. Motion carries 15. Next up is our notaries that are listed for you. Any below that line there? All right, motion by Henderson, second by Wilson. Commissioner Henderson?
Appreciate your willingness to serve.
Commissioner Wilson?
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, madam clerk. Motion carries 15. All right, at this time, we'll be hearing from the delegation and then hearing from the citizens of Rome County. So I do ask that you keep it to three minutes and make sure that it is germane to county business and even related to the county legislative body and the county business. So this time, first one up speak, state your name and where you're from.
Good evening. As always, good to see everybody. I'm Justin Snow. I'm the president and CEO of the Rome Alliance. As Mr. Berry mentioned, everybody's got a copy of the Rome Alliance report in your packets. I'll hit a few of the high points. And this was actually in the Rome County News last week on the front page, but Rome County is one of three counties in the state to be chosen to participate in the Tennessee Economic and Community Development and Property Evaluation Program to help plan for future growth by rating industrial properties for near term development as well as creating a pipeline of property for future development. And this is neat. I'm excited we're one of three. We sold a lot of our properties and we need to identify others. So we found out today on November 18th, consultants will be in the county to do a site visit to identify some properties. So we're excited about that program. As far as tourism, we just finished off a successful fall fishing season. I can tell you that the Tennessee Fascination High School Youth Tournament was held on September 27th in Rockaway at Tom Fuller Park, close to 240 votes. That's pretty big. So October was successful. We included and had the Buss Bass held at Kingston City Park. That's a $20,000 payout. So that's an attractive tournament. And then a couple of weekends ago, the Bass Anglers Invitational Trail High School Junior Tournament was held at Tom Fuller Park in Rockaway. So a lot of good things going on with tourism. I know our tourism director, Stacy Wilson, is in Athens, Georgia this week for the Royal Tourism Conference. I'll close by this. Chamber Annual Elected Officials Picnic is tomorrow night. It's our 30th annual. Of course, all of our elected officials are invited. We hope to see you there from 5:00 to 7:00 at Rome County Park. So it'll be a good time to fellowship and food and hope to see you there. That concludes my report. I'll answer any questions if something I have.
Chairman. Chairman, recognize Commissioner Berry.
On the second page where you have private capital investment, 6.9 billion, land proceeds, 4.9 billion, million, is that is that 6.9 billion, is that after latest announcements?
Well, the 6.9 billion includes the announcements that had the card this year.
So so up and up through?
Up through Oaklo.
Okay.
Yeah.
So not including, not including the last.
I'm not sure if Reggie would carry us over the $7 billion threshold. It's 7.1. So this changes enough. So the investment that's happened in the county the last three, roughly the last three years, is is over $7 billion. And if you look at the current county's current tax assessment, it's about $2.5 billion. So the projects that are being recruited in the county are are significant impact for the county.
So the new jobs, 2,597 new jobs, are those, is that through Oaklo or?
Well, you know, before 2021, the county had roughly 2,000 industrial jobs in and around the county. Since then, there's been 20, over 2,500 announced additional jobs. So not only a great capital investment, that these projects have been a good paying job since county as well.
I'll just share with you that last week, I was at a NACO event and I had folks come up to me about Oaklo. Oaklo is probably one of the hottest companies in the country right now because of the technology and things that they're using. So we're extremely fortunate to be able to have you call us home. And people are wondering how we've invested, how we've gotten investments of $7 billion. So we're on the radar of the national basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, any other questions, man? All right, thank you, sir. All right, next.
I'm Dawson. I live on 107 Swamp on Circle Road. And there's getting to be a big problem with the gravel trucks coming from the quarry and the yield signs. And they're not yielding at the yield signs. They're just coming right on through. And a couple of weeks ago, I was going out. I was going toward Harriman and a truck was coming from the quarry. He was loaded. And another truck was coming to the quarry and he was empty. And I got caught right in the middle between the two. And those trucks, they're haul, the truck and their weight's probably about 40 ton. And it's hard to stop just on a minute's notice. And the circle road, it is striped, but the road going to the quarry road is not striped. So that indicates to me that the quarry road should yield to the traffic on the main road which has striping on it. And it's it's getting to be a big problem. And I hope nobody gets hurt out there. And I have some pictures here if y'all would want those to look them over and see what you think. I mean, greatly appreciate it.
Tell me your name again, sir.
Isaac Dawson. It's 1007 Swamp on Circle.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Junior, I think several of y'all are on the road committee. This is something y'all can bring.
There's a resolution in the night's packet addressing just that, changing it from a yield sign to a stop sign. And just like him, about three months ago, I was pulling a trailer, a closed trailer, coming down that hill. And truck almost teed on me coming out. And when I swerved over another lane, an empty coming in, had a good drive into his field to keep from hitting me. And I stopped and we all got out. And I asked the guy, you know, you've got a yield sign. He said, well, I looked back up there and the sun blinded me. I said, so you meant that meant for you to just power on through, you know? And he just put his head down, climbed back in his truck. And I talked to the quarry, I talked to the quarry officer, and told him that we was going to see if I put a stop sign up. And he said he wished it would. So his phone went ringing.
Mr. Chairman, I have been to the quarry. I've been to the highway department. I've been to the sheriff's office. And in my table someplace else, I've been talking about this matter.
Well, you come to the right place tonight. We're going to vote on it.
I thank you very much, sir. Did y'all make these photos? Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
All right, next.
This is Chairman of Monty Fritz. I live at 109 Dane Sale. I'm also y'all's current state representative. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about a couple of things that are going down the pipe from the state of Tennessee. As most of y'all know from my voting record, I think we've been irresponsible with your money in Nashville. And so there's coming a push to double the voucher or or more, the voucher allotment in the state of Tennessee. Strong rumor in Nashville, the Speaker of the House is going to move to make that go from 20,000 to 40,000. And there is a less strong rumor that the governor wants to take that to an unlimited number. Not only is this an unconstitutional pursuit, as you know, I voted against it for that reason, but it's also fiscally responsible. Our rural counties are suffering. When you look at the heat map of where these dollars have gone, it's primarily gone to the larger cities. And that means that we're sending our tax dollars in disproportionately going to larger towns. I fully support parents having the right to choose where they send their kids. But this becomes one of the cases where Nashville government has seemed to have overlooked the will of the people and decided that just by God, we're going to do it one way or the other. And we've had several of those kinds of things happen. I apologize, but of course, language does don't know how to put that. And so we see our budget in Tennessee go from 37.5 billion to 59.5 billion dollars. We saw some of that because there's been a huge issue of some corporate welfare in the state of Tennessee. I am opposed to corporate welfare in any scheme, form, or fashion. Those dollars unconstitutional, first of all. When we send the taxpayers' dollars out to pick and choose winners and losers at any level of government, we've committed a constitutional crime. And I thank a great sin before Almighty God because we're doing that proverbial 11 thing and putting our thumb on the scale to decide who wins and who loses. We should not do that in the state of Tennessee. I think you all know you have my continued drive to fight against those kinds of things. Give you a couple of examples. We spent $550 million on the Titans. That's our money. They went to build them a new stadium so that they wouldn't have to play in the rain. I find that morally objectionable to spend our money to do that. We spent 13.5 million of our money to build the Smokies a new stadium. Now, corporate welfare reduces the risk to the entity that stands to gain the most from those stadiums while placing that risk on the backs of the taxpayer and putting in jeopardy those constitutional functions that we have in the state of Tennessee, like our schools and our roads, and perhaps even an expansion of infrastructure for energy and an expansion of infrastructure for water and sewage and solid waste. So with all that, I just want to let you know that sometimes just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. Just because you think you've got permission to do it and you can override the rule of the people, it's never an opportunity to do that. Our founders believed that the people had the ultimate authority. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll take any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Representative Fritz, got a question that's been addressed to me several several times with I-40 East and West, the money that was allocated here for once that went to the severe exit for for Buc-E's to widen. As we see generally every other day, not counting the construction, got to have that occasionally, right? We suffer through it. But about a year and a half ago, I think it was between the 19 mile stretch, we had approximately 95 accidents that occurred on the interstate due to the influx of traffic that's coming in. So I would only venture to say that's probably doubled if I was a guessing person that has shut down the interstate. Is there any money that's allocated that is going to help widen widen the interstates between the Rome County lines that you're seeing?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. There, part of the 10-year plan had dollars going in at the 4075 junction. Much of the focus from the state of Tennessee has been where that comes in, what we call or typically called the old scale deal. There has been an update to that. I apologize. I don't have the latest version if that if those dollars come down to the Kingston Bridge. We've heard rumors of that as of the last 10-year plan that did go on. We have talked to the commissioner about perhaps doing the the maintenance only at nighttime. That's going to help some. And that was a request I got here from the city of Kingston. If you all know that live here, we have one of those every other bad accident, every other day, bad accidents on Interstate 40. It makes things somewhat unbearable for the folks trying to get to grocery stores. And I understand that. So there is a focus on it. We're working with the Department of Transportation to try to make sure that we stay focused on that. I have a concern moving forward. Y'all know I'm running for governor. I think I'm going to win. The other two just don't know it yet. But the one of the things I think is going to be incumbent upon the next governor, whomever that may be, to look at is this. We raised our gas tax a few years ago, and I would dare say none of us have seen the benefit from the raise of that tax. I think we're going to have to look at the contracts that have been led, Commissioner. I think we're going to have to look at how we've measured and managed those contracts because I don't think the citizen of the state of Tennessee has got the bang for their buck that they expected when that when that come through. I also will offer this. We currently got about 250 troopers. We, against my wishes, added another 115 troopers to the state staff this past year. I thought that was a bad idea for lots of reasons. It cost us $38 million and it will cost us an recurring fund as Tennessee citizens to pay for that. It also costs Sheriff Stockton and Sheriff Davis in their ability to recruit and hire the best talent because we're now competing with the $70,000 entry salary. And that makes it tough on them and it makes it tough on y'all as you set your salaries. We've taken this approach of centralizing law enforcement in Nashville. Law enforcement in Nashville. We shouldn't be centralizing anything in Nashville. We need to push those decisions out. But with that, I would offer this. I think we have an enforcement issue. I will offer to you that I think that we need our troopers on the interstates and those high traffic carriers much more than we need them in the Rockaway and Kingston, right tickets. Man, I get lots of complaints about that. And I'm not sure why we have not corrected that. I've spoken to the Department of Safety about it. But I think enforcement is important on our interstate. Unfortunately, I apologize for the long answer. The people drive like idiots today, Chairman Wilson or Commissioner Wilson, and you know that. I mean, it's drive like crazy, distracted and drunk. And I think enforcement and that visible state trooper sitting on the interstate, I think, helps with some of that. So I think there's a recalibration needed in those regards as well. Last thing on that question, because it gets into the infrastructure. Some of the corporate welfare that we've used, I think, in the state of Tennessee to grow in business and people here. I think liberty grows people for the best reasons. But we've allowed that, we've allowed our growth to supersede all of our infrastructure. And it's going to be tough for years to come, I'm afraid. Even if we have an expansion project going, the management of the contracts in the past have been so slow and arduous that it's a decades-long process, not a years-long process. And we're going to have to get better at the way we spend money and execute contracts in the state of Tennessee. I hope that helps your question, though.
Chair recognizes.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You know, the first question I'm going to ask you is about Silver Card. We're not making any strides. We need help there. And that may be one of the leading problems that we have in our counties is trying to avoid them. Secondly, I wish you would look at what Commissioner Wilson was talking about. The growth in our county, we're talking about supposedly 70,000 maybe by by 23rd people in our county. That's a tremendous growth. All of these companies coming in with all these jobs, it's affecting our infrastructure. So I would ask that to send our state monies back to those communities wherever they are that are growing the fastest and that need the most to get their infrastructures in place. So appreciate appreciate what you're doing and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I address that? Thank you for your questions. We do have a an Asian carp symposium coming up in Loudoun County coming soon. We've got all the right people there again. I think they've committed to be there. We are continuing to put pressure on that. One of the things I've been most disappointed about, to be honest with Commissioner Berry, is that we've had very little from the civic groups and the chambers of commerce. Nobody's engaged. I have, you know, Denise and our Realtors. And we propose, we've approached the real estate in Knoxville, the commission, help us with this. And it seems that they're fixated on that immediate dollar rather than the long-term dollar that those Asian carp could cost us. As you know, Cole Hardy, Wildlife and Fisheries biologist for TWRA, now lives in another city. So we can put no more pressure on him. He's got married and he lives here in our district. So I think that's a good thing for us. The Corps of Engineers laid their pencils down. I guess that's a federal term for being lazy. They laid their pencils down back during the Biden administration. We all six months on that whole process of the Corps of Engineers. I'm hoping President Trump will of course correct some of those feckless behaviors by the generals. And I do think that we have support with TWRA, with Director Maxidov now that we didn't have before. I think that we've helped with that relationship. So I'm optimistic. I apologize to you, sir, that we've not been able to talk this yet. But I do promise I am focused on that.
The next governor is going to be, it's going to fall in his lap.
Well, the next governor is going to be from Kingston, Tennessee.
That's right.
I have to, I'm sorry, it's shangals sitting there. The growth by 2030, you mentioned something again there, Commissioner, that's important to me. As as we send money to the commission of the arts, $13 million this past year, you all know I voted against the budget. I briefed you on that. We send monies to entities and to NGOs that are not, that is not benefiting benefiting every Tennessean. That infrastructure that you mentioned, Commissioner Berry, is something we need to be focusing on. The reason that I set up an energy policy in the state of Tennessee my first year out was because it's important. We're importing about one out of four kilowatts in the state of Tennessee right now. We did stupid things like shut down Bull Run Stand Plant and did not replace its capacity. And so that's called, we're feeling now those those increases in our rates. But it's not just that infrastructure. It's also our ability to process sewage and potable water to the homes. And so I want liberty to continue to grow Californians and Washingtonians and everybody else in Virginia that's in the state of Tennessee. But we better not let that get ahead of our infrastructure. Every person in that room, in this room and across our county is going to suffer in a tax increase that's going to put you all in a horrible spot. So I promise you I'm focused on it. Yes, sir.
Sir, I have one question for you. Incentives by the state and the federal government, DOE has a $52 billion budget. As they, they're the ones that are tracking majority of this nuclear industry in. What are the chances of any of them just collecting their $5 billion and saying, okay, I'm not going to build there now? Or is that, or is it a legal binding contract after they accept that money from the federal government, they've got to build and produce somewhere?
Let me, if you don't mind, Chairman, I'll start first with how we have mismanaged that in the state of Tennessee. We put your taxpayers toward a Ford plant to build battery operated Ford pickups in West Tennessee. And it looks like the battery part of that has gone down. There are callbacks in those contracts to be able to recover those monies. But the citizens still lost by having their money shipped out. It has been my experience. I've processed the law. It has been my experience, I've processed the law of uranium, I've helped, I've sat in boardrooms, I've been able to handle the uranium on the floors, and it's been my experience, that lots of these companies come in because they are attracted to the opportunity. I see all the folks that have committed to come into, to our county, and I hope they do. I think it is highly unlikely that we will have several fuel manufacturers or enrichers in the state, or in the county of Brown, or even in the state of Tennessee. I think our skill set that we have is gonna continue to draw people. Our, our not being phobic about uranium and special nuclear materials is a big advantage for us, but I think there is a great risk that we have allocated money to some of these companies that may never break the law. That's not the case, but I think when we look back at what history has proven, that's probably the leading indicator of what we're at.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Fritz?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next. Anyone else wanna address the county commission?
Thank you. My name's Michael Webby. I live at 201 Lane Hedgecock Road in Kingston. And it was very timely with the end of Mr. Fritz' talk there, because I had two things that I wanted to, to at least make known to you. First one is dealing with the nuclear companies. So I work at Oak Ridge National Lab, and there are, just for your knowledge, there are two primary inhibitors to companies like that, and why they don't make it or why they don't start a, once policy. They get a pre-bridged policy in East Tennessee. We're for it, we're used to it, all of our legislation is for it. So there's the first thing. Second thing is, is that the startup cost for most of these companies inhibit them from ever starting. The amount of time that it takes to gain your return on investment, keep private investors from doing it, because they don't get their money back in time. So the only way they're gonna do this is if they get these massive influx of money. That's why the government has put out almost $6 billion to potentially start this. So they're here for those two reasons. Our legislatures just happen to be the chairman on the House Energy and Water Committee, Representative Fleishman, he's a pretty powerful person when it comes to that $6 billion. So that's why they're here. Second half of that is, is that if you look at where those people have moved or have want to live in the past 10 years, and I'll give you a statistic. Oak Ridge National Lab has added more people in the last 10 years than all of those companies will add combined. Do we see that? Do we feel the increase in the tax revenue and 4,000 jobs at Oak Ridge now? No. Where did they move? They moved to, to Blount County and West Knoxville. Why? They made one visit to their schools, and they looked at their records, and they visited their facilities, and they did all of that. My recommendation is if you all have money to spend, don't spend it on these companies. Spend it on schools. Improve our schools for the kids we already have. Any money this county has is not gonna, it's like throwing sand in the ocean to those companies. We're, they're talking about billions, and I would, I would recommend putting our money in the schools. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, next. Anyone else wanna address the county commission? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to county attorney's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may have noticed in your packet, we have settled the Broken Arrow Road tree case. Mr. Reed, the property owner, and Mr. Ferguson met, and they identified the trees that needed to go down, and Mr. Reed is a very good worker. But that case is over with, it's been resolved. The only other thing I have, we have about six cases set tomorrow in Chancery Court for the code violations, so I'll let you know next month how those turn out. That's all I have. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
Are we being sued due to the code regulation infringement that we did?
We have been sued by the city of Harriman, who got sued by a property owner that, as you sure you know, we contract out to provide code enforcement services for the city of Harriman. And our codes office worked with Harriman to demolish a house there. And between the time that the process was finished and the time Harriman demolished the house, the ownership had changed, and the new owner was never notified of what they were doing. So the new owner sued Harriman. Harriman in turn has sued us because of our position of enforcing their codes.
All right, does, do we have a federal case lawsuit pending?
Well, yes and no.
I didn't know about that, but thank you.
Okay, the federal case. We have a gentleman who's been representing himself, and he has a house that is dilapidated. We got a court order through here to demolish the house. He in turn removed the case to federal court. Federal court said they didn't have jurisdiction, sent it back down. So we had another hearing after that, and he didn't like the outcome of that hearing, so he in turn removed it to federal court again. We have filed the necessary documents to get it sent back down. In the meantime, he has filed a lawsuit by himself in federal court against the codes office, but he has not had any summonses issued, so it's just sitting there. We haven't been served, so.
Similar to the three that I've been following.
Pardon me? Yeah, similar to the situation that you've been.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right. Any questions for attorney?
Mr. Chairman? As far as the Harriman case, when it changed ownership, shouldn't that have made its way to an opposite? Because hey, it's under this, I mean, is the left hand not talking to the right?
I really don't know. The case has just been filed, so I don't really know what happened between the left hand and the right hand. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Barrett.
A question I've got, and I'm just gonna go ahead and say it. Out at the Preserve, coming off of Hamilton Road and by Union Chapel, the Preserve's coming in and out. What teeth or what do we have as a commission to either make that one way or even block, block that off to where the Preserve has to go out to Gallow Road legally?
I'm not familiar with that. I'll be happy to look at it and get back to you, but I don't, I have never been out there, so I don't know.
Well, I'm asking this. Our county road, Oak Ridge City comes to our county road. Can, can we make a road one way, or can we even block that off? I guess is what I'm asking.
Again, I'm not comfortable answering that until I actually go out and look at it. So I'm happy to do that, but this is the first I've heard.
Okay.
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to hear that. All right, can you tell me exactly where it is?
Yeah, I can tell you.
Okay.
It's, we have a 14. Mr. Burke, what's your address?
2477.
Right after 2477 Longville. And then the other one is right on Longville Road, right before the curve, Union Chapel Baptist Church, which is around, gosh, probably 2,700 Longville Road. Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Is that all Hamilton Road going over the hill there too?
That's Old Union.
Old Union, Hamilton goes into Old Union.
What road are you wanting to make one way or close? What road?
Myself, I would like to see the Preserve be closed off coming out of Longville, or at best, those two roads we just mentioned, maybe only go in, but I want them to go out of Gallow Road.
But what are the names of the two roads you've just mentioned? Longville Road and?
Hamilton.
Hamilton Road? Is it Hamilton Road and Longville Road?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Hamilton and Longville intersect.
Okay, all right, see, I've never been out there.
Yeah, I'd be happy to give you a tour.
All right, that sounds good.
My name is, his name is a pronunciation.
It was.
So I, and I know some questions. I also received phone calls. So who's, who's the chairman of the road on the upcoming, so we'll, so you're on that?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrison, I would like for you to view the width of Hamilton Road as well with the road community.
Yes.
And see, I don't know that, that road is not big enough to pass two vehicles on. You gotta put one in the ditch before the other one passes through. My wife's cracked two or three, I know two mirrors.
So that'd be Hamilton and Longville?
Be, yeah, Hamilton main in there, or the length and width of Hamilton Road there.
Right.
And I don't know that the county owns any road frontage to, or any more frontage on that property.
In the road book, and I don't have it, it tells the length, the width, what it's covered in, and whether you grab or, or ask.
All right, thank you, sir. You gotta take a look at it.
All right, any other questions for the county attorney? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the county technical report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, just for citizens' awareness, Resolutions 20 and 21 have been withdrawn by Budget Committee.
Thirty, thirty-one and thirty-two.
Thirty-one and thirty-two, thank you very much. Thirty-one and thirty-two, Amber.
So under all this line, thirty, twenty and twenty-one?
Thirty-one.
Yeah, I looked at my agenda wrong.
Thirty, thirty-one?
Thirty-one and thirty-two. I think thirty's been wrong.
It has.
Yeah.
Thirty-one and thirty-two.
Thank you.
We applaud the Budget Committee for doing the preliminary work if this becomes needed, but in discussion with the city of Oak Ridge, it's not necessary or ready yet. They're still finalizing the development agreement with Arano, and talking to their attorney and with the city manager, they don't advise us moving forward with this step yet. And it may be unnecessary looking at our finances and some other alternative ways that we could accomplish, live, fulfill our obligations that we agreed on last year, but looking at different ways we can do this potentially without borrowing this amount of funds. So again, applaud the Budget Committee for their preliminary work, but it's just not ready. Secondly.
When they stop.
Yes, sir.
No danger at this point of that company backing out?
What I would say with that is, all of these projects, every single one of them, will always be complicated, always. With Arano in particular, everything continues to move forward, they're still doing their preliminary design, they're still working with DOE and property transfer. But Commissioner Fleishman, Congressman Fleishman, put in $2.7 billion into fiscal year '24 budget, it was like June '24, for enrichment activities. So we're now in fiscal year '26, if they can ever get a budget approved and open the government back up, we're at two budget cycles after that, and that, those funds remain unappropriated. Arano has positioned themselves that they want and or need a significant portion of those enrichment funds. So if they will allow that appropriation or lack of appropriation to affect our project, we don't know. We're moving forward, they're moving forward, we'll see how it plays out. I still believe it's gonna happen regardless, and I'm not alone in that opinion, and from other people who are much higher ranking than I am, that's, that's where we stand right now.
I thought we'd already possessed the 930 acres, so that's not true.
The, the site is being transferred from DOE to Arano, from EM to Arano.
Yeah, Arano can't own it, they're a foreign company. I thought that's why we drafted up a resolution, we absorbed and signed for 930 acres.
No, that's not accurate.
Roan County Industrial Development didn't.
They, Roan County Industrial Development Board initiated the transfer request, but they handed that off after we won the project, and EM continues to work through Oak Ridge to transfer that property. But that is nearing, so that's coming up on two years in December, so it's, it's very close to the end of property transfer.
So, not to get in the weeds here, and I believe we can talk about it later, but I thought because they were a foreign country, foreign company, they could not own and operate and possess land.
Travis?
That was more a tax incentive structure.
Yeah, I, I think they have to, best I can remember, they have to own it, that's why we didn't do a pilot.
That's right.
It's because the nature of the, the nature of the business, what they're doing.
So the pilot agreement, IDB owns it, and it's basically a leaseback with a tax break to it. They had to do a TIF, it's not, and it's not even a real TIF, it's just a tax discount, so that they could own it. They have to own it per an international treaty between France and the United States. So it's backwards from kind of what you were saying, they have to. So we're close, we're really close to the end of that process, and there are callbacks in the agreements that we've already, that you all have already helped agree to.
Mr. Chairman, part, part of our, of our deal was, we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna pay the whole $5 million upfront. So what we decided to do was it would be best for us, I think, to wait and see what happened. First of all, to see when they needed the money, because we were told they didn't need it all at once, so it's foolish to borrow the five, pay the fees on all of that. So we're gonna wait and see what happens, and alternate, probably get in at least two budget years and maybe three budget years before all of that has to come out, but that way we won't have any money invested until actually, it's actually needed.
No, I'm fine with that, I just, I just, I thought we, the Roan County Industrial Board owned the land.
No, we initiated the property transfer request. The goal is to get it in the hands of the companies as soon as possible so they can start working on it. Yeah. I mean, can I?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Thank you for letting us interrupt you.
No, that's fine. I mean, you all have your rundown in front of you, I'm not gonna read it to you. Just a couple of things I want to point out. First of all, thank you all to the ones, almost an entire commission came to the O'Klo informational session. We're trying to put together a couple more for you to do with Radiant and with Kairos Power, so they can explain to you where they are, especially if it's Kairos, we want to do it onsite so you get to see what they're, they're already building. So just know we're working on doing those for you, and that's based off your feedback. I think you all felt like that was helpful. Founder's Day will be held on Thursday, November 13th, at 6:00 p.m. in Judge Wick's courtroom. We have a great slate. Thank you all very much for the nominations that you had. I hope everybody can make it. If you haven't been able to make it before, that's, that's just such a good day. It's one of the best things that I think we do as a county government. And then finally, the Opiate Council was going to present to you tonight. You all have funded them out of Fund 127, pick up the three positions, and I asked it to report on what their results have been from those investments, but I asked it, I asked them to postpone that to next month because of the length of our agenda tonight. So I expect them to come during my report in November to talk to you about their results and their programs. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, and I'd be glad to answer your questions.
I guess this question is probably to the commissioners that nominated. Is there any WWII veterans that you guys nominated? Okay, thank you. All right, any questions for the county executive? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to special orders. All right, special order number one, Confirming the Judge Don Coffey to the Roan County Planning Commission, his term will expire October 20, 2029. Motion by Barry, second by Parks. Commissioner Barry.
Yes, sir. Mr. Coffey has served the county in a couple of capacities, probably on the environmental review board, and he's also finishing up a term on the Plateau Park Industrial Board that probably will dissolve here in the next year or so. He's, he owns a company in Oak Ridge, very active in the community, and I would strongly urge to support him. Thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Parks?
Nothing further.
In discussion, in debate. Madam Clerk. Alright, carries fifteen. Confirmation of approval to correct the term of expiration of Dennis Turpin, member of the Rome County Industrial Development Board of Counties Cumberland, Morgan, and Rome County. This term shall be corrected to expire November 30th, 2028. Motion by Henderson, second by Dove, Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
Commissioner Dove.
Need to correct the, the term of her serving.
Alright, in discussion, in debate. Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen. Confirmation of reappointment of Don Coffey to the Rome County Industrial Development Board of Counties Cumberland, Morgan, and Rome County. Term is set to expire November 30th, 2031. Motion by Berry, second by Dove, Commissioner Berry.
Same, Don Coffey. He's finishing this term up, I'd say, I think that Plateau Partnership, because of the racetrack taking up all those places in Cumberland County, that, that probably will be in its last statement, but again, very active in that, I think he's the secretary of that.
Alright, Commissioner Dove.
Don also serves on the environmental review board, he's a busy man, so let's keep him, keep him working.
Alright, in discussion, in debate? Madam Clerk. Don, sorry, you had, we had one.
I just have a question. When we agreed to that partnership, there was some tax abatements that was to come back to Rome County. We, I think, invested like $2 million up there, maybe over more than $2 million. And it's been quite some time since we've had anybody to give any report back to this committee or to the commission. And have we made any money by it?
What, Mr. Hooks, what are you speaking, what are you talking, what are you talking to?
The Cumberland Plateau.
The Cumberland Plateau.
You made some money when that land was sold to the folks that are putting in the racetrack. I don't recall that much, but.
We made our money back in a little.
But you can add some money.
Chair recognized, Commissioner Berry.
Yes, I, I think we put $2.6 million from three counties, Warden, Cumberland, and Rome County. And that agreement runs out, I think, in 2027. So, so the money that we made off the sale of the land, plus some property tax now that their condos are finishing up. They've got some permanent buildings out there, the racetrack is in place. So, there's tax money coming in, and we should get about two years of tax money out of it. I think it's 2027 that it runs out. But, but you're right, we haven't had a report from, from, from getting actual dollars. I spoke to the mayor of Cumberland County last week, and I think it's 2027.
Chair recognized, Commissioner Wilson.
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Did I answer your question, Commissioner Hooks?
I didn't, Bart, I didn't answer my question.
Alright, special order kicked through, carries fifteen. Alright, Resolution One has been pulled, Resolution Two has been pulled. Resolution Three, resolution authorizing the naming of private driver located in the third municipal district of Rome County off the county lane map 071 parcel 059. Motion by Parks, second by Gann, Mr. Parks.
I have my head.
Commissioner Gann.
Nothing, sir.
Any discussion, in debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
This is the committee.
Yes.
Alright. Alright, motion carries fifteen. Alright, we've removed four and five, go to six. Resolution to changing the speed limit on a portion of the New Hope Road. Resolution 102506. Motion by Parks, second by Berry, Commissioner Parks.
Yes, it's been through the Budget, or the road committee.
Commissioner Berry.
Yes, sir, this, this goes into grand debate. They have the current speed limit at 20 miles an hour, and they're just asking to move it up, and the road committee approved it, and I think we should, we should move it up with them as well. Thank you.
Alright, Chair recognized, Commissioner Gann.
Question was answered, sir.
I did have someone reach out, and they may have emailed everyone on this, Bruce Ferris?
Yes, he's a resident of Grand, Grand Debate.
Yeah, he, in his letter, he was opposed to it, but it hasn't been through the highway department?
He spoke at the meeting.
Oh, did he?
Yeah.
Okay.
He spoke, and then another guy before he spoke.
Alright, and it's, help me out, is it 20 going to 30?
35. 35.
So, we're doing the 15 mile an hour increase, they're probably already doing that now. I think that's what he alluded to in his words, if not even more than that. So, alright, any other discussion, any other debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Our motion carries. Seven, Resolution 102507, a resolution amending the general purpose school fund 141. Reflecting changes in revenue expenditures estimated for SSPG and ISM grants. Motion by Wilson, second by Henderson. Commissioner Wilson.
This is a budget amendment that's been through the proper channels for Budget Committee. It's for special aid grant, CTE grant, nothing further.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further, sir.
Any discussion, in debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen. Resolution 102508, resolution authorizing transfer of surplus vehicles, a 2010 Chevy Tahoe to the City of Rockwood. Motion by Henderson, second by Wilson, Commissioner Henderson.
Not needed, let's see, they don't.
Commissioner Wilson.
Nothing further.
Any discussion, in debate? Madam Clerk. Motion carries. Resolution 102509, resolution to declare two highway department vehicles as described below as surplus to their fleet. 2015 Ford F-250 Super Duty Lariat, and then a 1999 Chevrolet Dump Truck. Motion by Henderson, second by Gann, Commissioner Henderson.
Again, if it's not needed, let's get rid of it.
Commissioner Gann.
Nothing, sir.
Any discussion, in debate? Madam Clerk. Resolution 102510, that motion carries fifteen. Resolution authorizing transfer of real property located at 604 North Changelin Avenue, Rockwood, Tennessee. 37854 map 054 Delta, Group Hotel parcel 001. Motion by Kirby, second by Berry, Commissioner Kirby.
Nothing, Barry.
Commissioner Berry.
Probably just trying to get in the house. Thank you, sir.
Alright, in discussion, in debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen. Resolution to approve a 36-month agreement with BCN to replace three copper phone lines with the internet and cellular backup connections for the courthouse. Motion by Kirby, second by Hooks, Commissioner Kirby.
Nothing further.
Commissioner Hooks.
We need company with this.
Any discussion, in debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen. Resolution supporting operation green light for veterans. Motion by Berry, second by Dr. Henry, Commissioner Berry.
Yes, sir, this started a couple of years ago, asking, asking all government buildings to turn green lights on for veterans for the week of Veterans Day. I think we've done it in the last couple of years. And certainly, we encourage any citizens that wanted to support veterans to turn a green light on as well. That's, that's what it's all about.
Alright, Mr. Hammond.
Happy to support this.
Alright, in discussion, in debate? Madam Clerk. Fifteen, resolution adding a winding trail to the Rome County Court of County Road List. Motion by Henderson, second by Gann, Commissioner Henderson.
It's been through the road committee, approved.
Commissioner Gann.
Nothing, Bobby.
In discussion, in debate? Wrong. Motion carries fifteen. Alright, this is one of the gentlemen spoke to us tonight on, Resolution 102514, resolution replacing the yield sign on Quarry Road with a stop sign. Motion by Henderson, second by Dawson, Commissioner Henderson.
Yes, sir, this is, Quarry Road, comes off the road I live on. I was close to Quarry that when they died, I might have to straighten pictures in the house. And as Mr. Dawson said, and him both had issues about getting right over it. And when you get hit by a gravel truck loaded or anything, there's no second chances, so I appreciate y'all's support, just thank you.
Mr. Dawson.
Mr. Chairman, this location Mr. Dawson talked about, I actually went over there early one morning, like 6 o'clock. And said, watched exactly what the, what the gentleman was talking about, so it, it is a hazard, you know. I think if we don't do something, you know, it's gonna come back eventually to us, you know, that we know about it, just like the term left, we just totally forgot everything, and we didn't do it.
Chair recognized, Commissioner Gann.
Is, so Junior on the road committee, I would suggest that if you wanna talk to him about it, there's some rumble strips on Sugar Valley Road and Skyline where it comes together. It's a pretty dangerous intersection right there. And we have rumble strips probably about 30 feet before the stop sign. And that really helps folks, 'cause as you say, the guy told you that the sun is in, he's hitting me in eyes, he couldn't see the sign. He probably would've used to say.
Well, he could see people coming.
Yeah, but.
He blew the sign, he just couldn't see that.
Those rumble strips really, really do a lot, do really good right there at Sugar Valley, 'cause it kinda lets you know there's gonna be a stop sign there, so. With the new stop sign, it may be good to have those rumble strips.
Appreciate that.
Alright, any other discussion, any other debate?
I grant, post a call when you come in my area.
Alright, hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen. Alright, Resolution 102515, status in Rome County Committee on Committees for the period of October 31st, 25 to August 31st, 2026. Motion by Dove, second by Wilson, Commissioner Dove.
Yes, many of our committees met, and we did street government, we eliminated the broadband cable in Little Paks, American Rescue Plan, and AdHOT Airport. We did make permanent the short-term rental. We took, if people had requested to be on committees, we tried to honor those requests. We did not remove anybody unless we knew for certain they wanted to be removed. But I think, we tried to accommodate everybody.
Alright, Mr. Wilson.
I just wanted to say, I've been on that committee, I understand what goes through it and what the past that's ahead of you, you know. So, I appreciate the work that you all did, very much.
Alright, any discussion, in, okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Yeah, I served on that committee, and, and, you know, when I first got elected back in 14, we had a problem having a forum. People just weren't showing up. And my input was, you know, if somebody wants to be on the committee, they're gonna show up at committee. And that's what we tried to honor, you know, people that wanted on it, and people wanted to stay on it, so I just appreciate that, thank you.
Chair recognized, Commissioner Berry.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say, thank you for, for you doing what you started out to do, and after rotate that committee every year. I think it's proven to be very valuable and.
Fair process.
I appreciate it very much.
Yeah, thank you, very fair process, so. Alright, any other discussion, any other debate? Alright, Resolution to, motion carries fifteen. Resolution to reflect changes in revenue and expenditure for the General Fund 101 for statewide school resource officers grant for fiscal year. Motion by Wilson, second by Kirby, Commissioner Wilson.
This one was applied by Captain Cook, it's over the SROs. They finally got them in all the schools, this one goes to the Midtown Altria with $75,000. Nothing further, but of all the ones that's wanted, definitely needed in, so.
Commissioner Kirk.
Nothing.
Any discussion, in debate? Hearing none, Madam Clerk. Alright, motion carries fifteen. Alright, resolution to amend the revenue and expenditure in the General Fund 101 for the mental health transfer grant that has been awarded for the fiscal year. Motion by Dove, second by Henderson, Commissioner Dove.
This was an adjustment, we had too much money budgeted in there, so we didn't receive that much in the grant, so we had to make that adjustment and reduce the budget.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
Any discussion, in debate? Madam Clerk. Motion carries, Resolution 102918, a resolution to reflect changes in revenue and expenditures in the General Fund 101 for the community-based traffic safety enforcement education grant. Motion by Commissioner Wilson.
This one was a zero percent match, that's kinda, that's the one we like.
Thank you.
Nothing further.
Commissioner Berry.
Nothing further.
Alright, in discussion, in debate? Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen. Resolution 102519, a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the General Capital Project Fund 171 AMV to the Fund 118 ambulance operating budget. Motion by Mr. Dove, second by Commissioner Parks, Commissioner Dove.
This is moving 120,000 from the capital into the operating budget. We've had some issues with the funding there, they've been running in a negative on some occasions, so we're moving the money from capital. They'll still have enough by the next fiscal year.
Alright, Commissioner Parks?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Brackett.
So, this is the second time we've had to do this correctly. How many times are, is there a prob, what's going on, it's makes, whatever it be? I know we have to have it.
So, so there's been an extreme drop in costs. And so, call it what you want, I don't know, just looking at the report this month, we're down again this, this month. We, we've raised rates twice in the last two years, and fortunately, if we hadn't of that, we'd be in worse shape. At some point, look, you, you gotta have ambulances, right? And, and so, we, we've done, we've added 100,000, I think, right, I think it's 100. And, and I'll wait and see what happens, and then we, this is another 120. I mean, at some point, we'll have to decide, if, if it don't improve any, we're gonna have to decide, do we, are we gonna subsidize it? Or are we gonna start cutting ambulances, or cutting, cutting hours? We've cut hours, we've cut an old day truck out. You know, you just, you chip away, you chip away. At some point, you're gonna come to the head, and you're gonna say, alright, we're gonna fund this with property tax, because we gotta have five ambulances or four ambulances, or you're gonna cut an ambulance.
So, what do we do as far as, we've gotta keep people safe. We have to have, we have to have it, but raising rates all the time, I don't think would be, I, I wouldn't think, unfair to people.
True. Let me, let me, Commissioner Berry.
Yes, sir. Everything has been said. Call volumes have been down for a long period of time, they were down across the state, we checked, we checked that out. We're, we're working with the state legislature now to try to get more Medicare money for, per run. The runs that we were, that we were most profitable with were dialysis patients. We don't want more dialysis patients to cause, to cause us to have money. But, but that drop, that was a significant drop in our revenue as well. We're, we're looking, our, our cash on hand today was 103,000 with a trustee. That's, that's gone from, you know, we used to, we would normally have 250, 300,000 dollars. So, everything, everything is, I mean, we're, we're, we're living payday to payday right, right now, and hoping that the calls are gonna go up. We're taking the ambulance off the road, so you're exactly right, we don't, there's not many rabbits left in the half. We're gonna have, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions if, if we stay the course that we're on right now. We're just continuing to look at it, ambulance committees are meeting monthly to make sure that, that we don't let some time slip away before we have to make some decisions. But, but we're, we're gonna, we're there, we're almost.
What is a possible alternative, I guess that's what I'm asking, what are we?
I guess that's what I'm asking, what are we looking at? We only have two, two sources of revenue. We can either raise rates, or we can raise, put more property tax money into it. So that's, that's the problem that we have, is there's not a lot of revenue generating sources that we can, that we can do. Ambulance services around us, and I know it doesn't help us, but ambulance services around us are in the same situation, much worse than we are. Anderson County's in really, really dire straits. Not for, you read about them all the time in the paper, but they're, they're a private, private family service. That's not making many, you know, they get fined ten or fifteen thousand dollars a pop for being late. So the, the, the only thing we can do is, is look at it and either, either raise rates again or, or, uh, put property tax money into it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, um, you're, you're all over, this is what OES committee talks about every single time. And then, as it, as necessary terms of budget committee too. From a staff perspective, all we can do is to be as lean and efficient as we possibly can. April works with Tim and Jennifer on every single expenditure. They review every single expend money on, they discuss and approve together to make sure that we are saving every penny that we possibly can. But it really does come down to what you, you know, do you wanna subsidize and make sure you have more ambulances out there so our response times are lower? Or you try to run it more like a business and be lean and cut back the truck because you just don't have the revenue coming in? These are the tough decisions that that committee has to recommend that you all ultimately have to decide. And those discussions are happening constantly.
And we're talking about life safety.
Absolutely.
Five minutes, try to deliver it out, ten minutes, ten minutes, somebody...
But I will say that, my, Commissioner Burr is exactly right. We are in way better shape than a lot of counties around us. Uh, our resp, our average response times will continue to be below standard, below time, uh, no, in the good way.
Right, right, right.
And, and the quality of service that we're providing continues to be high-quality service. April's running a great service. But from a business perspective, this is a needle that we're trying to thread. We'll have to pay attention to this forever. Ultimately, reimbursement rates is, is what's hurting, that and low call volume, those are the two things working against us. So if we can get at the legislative level reimbursement rates adjusted, that could help us tip the scales in our favor.
I, I wouldn't say, April is probably the most scrutinized director that we have, because it's every day we're checking to see, what's our cash on hand? And so thanks, thanks to our budget director for helping, uh, look at, look at anything that we can cut. And, uh, that's what we're trying to do. I guess if we have to go the route of putting tax money into that.
Which is what you're doing tonight.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That's money that we, that we have. I'm saying if we have to just do it a different way, I don't wanna get so lean in a business model that we cost a lot. You can't put money on a lot.
And, and that's truly a decision you all can make. You want to use tax money to make sure we have ambulances on the road. That's totally your decision.
We have to provide our services, resident. So that's something we really need to dig into. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, Commissioner Wilson.
Uh, yeah, I just basically wanted to echo from the TCSA conference, uh, kind of reverb a lot of that, talking about, I, I was really intrigued to find out that it was happening all across the state and everybody's fighting the same battle that we're in. So one thing that you gotta keep in mind, if you ever said, "Hey, we wanna go the AMR route," or whatever, they can come in and do it cheaper, they just come in and put two ambulances on the road. And we are offering a premium service, which is wonderful that we have that. I'm always willing to put tax dollar, tax dollars towards that. And like I said, to, to keep it, because I would be more sure as what it'd be, that their area that you pull it from, that that would be the catastrophe and they'd be calling you going, "Why did you pull that ambulance from, why did you pull that station from that area?" So that's what weighs on your mind, so you bring up a point. But we watching it very closely, and I was just curious, you know, just intrigued that even the privatized, uh, such as Priority was having the same issues, like severe, struggling through it, so. But we're doing a good job and you can't, you can't make the calls come up unless we just stand out in the middle of the thing and cause accidents, but, uh, we're doing good with it, it's just trying to get that call volume up, so. Just reverberating, thank you for that.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henderson.
Yeah, uh, for any of us that's never had a breathing issue, I can't breathe. Five minutes is a long time. And when it takes twelve, fifteen minutes to get to your house and you can't breathe, to me, the family would have right to sue us if we did not fund these ambulances. Because we had to pull one out of that neighborhood, or that area. I'm gonna throw the mayor of the bus here for a minute. We talk about all the tax money coming in from these businesses. We can build schools, we can build courthouses, we can build jails. Can we not fund ambulances out of them? So, you know...
Mr. Henderson, second time in six months, we will have moved tax dollars to fund ambulance.
But we shouldn't have to, it, it needs to be funded and be done. It shouldn't be second guessing, I mean, if we're getting, all the, we'll be getting all this second, or, uh, big money downfall from these companies coming in, uh, you know, we shouldn't have to hold a meeting and say, "Well, we need to put another million dollars in there." It should already be there, we need to fund it. Because out of everybody on this commission, I'm the one that wasn't able to breathe, okay? And I'm real passionate about this. So, you know, we, we need to start doing that and quit talking about it. Yeah, we can build schools, and we need to build schools, I mean, that's just something about it. We need to add on to the jail and what have you. But when we're out here recruiting retirees to come retire Rome, the retirees don't want schools. They've done built their schools. They want police, fire, ambulance, hospital, all that stuff. When we bring in, you know, new, new families and stuff, you know, they're the ones who want the schools and everything. We gotta do both, but I'm just telling you, we got to fund these ambulances regardless. And when that tax influx we got coming in hits, we shouldn't be having a meeting here tonight, or not tonight, whether we gonna fund these ambulances out of taxpayer's money. It's their money, and that's one of the services they require. And I say, "We need to do this and just quit talking about it."
Mr. Chairman Chester's fun.
Yeah, please.
The, the one-eighteen ambulance fund was fun, was based off of projections on call volume. So the amount of tax dollars relative to the amount of reimbursement we expected from what our projected call volume was, was what the budget was set on. So as call volumes continue to decrease, then overall funding decreases with it. It's not a matter of, uh, not prioritizing EMS.
I understand that.
We have arguably, based on the awards that they've won individually and collectively, arguably the best EMS service in the state of Tennessee. So I would say that this is only a matter of changing trends in the, in the entire market, which are not well-understood by most governments, by most counties. I think there's not really any answers. Commissioner Wilson was talking about TCSA last week. One of the issues discussed here is that we don't understand exactly why call volumes are decreasing to the extent that they are. So what we're bringing to you tonight to approve is taking money that was funded by tax dollars in the capital fund and moving it to one-eighteens to hopefully get us over the hump. If we can't get over the hump here, then we'll be back talking to you about additional funding in the future and letting you all decide at what level you wanna prioritize EMS.
So, you know, I wanna say this, if we got twelve ambulance personnel running around the clock twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five, it don't matter what the call volume is, our funding's the same. Our call volume drops, our funding's the same, 'cause we still have to pay salaries and just pay benefits.
Our expenditures.
Our expenditures, right.
Yes, okay.
So, and when the volume increase, this is still the same until we add another person. Whenever we add a person, that money's forever, until they're fired, we, we lay them off, whatever. That, that money's forever, that's their salary and their benefit package. So as that increases, the money going in needs to increase, you know? I, it don't need to be based on our call volume, because our expenditures is the same. We still takes, you know, twenty-six gallons to fill the truck. You know, it still takes two operators and that ambulance. You know, it, it still takes the same money whether we get one call in there or we get a hundred. And we, we need to fund it as that, because the expenditures is gonna be the same whether we have a call or not.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Henderson. Full recognizes, uh, Commissioner Burr.
What about me?
I'm sorry, chair recognizes Commissioner Hook.
Chairman. Do you need to go first, Burr?
No, he's already went once, so I mean, go ahead, you're it, you're it.
Second, Mr. Chairman. I fought this battle for twenty years when I was executive director of nine-one-one. There's no easy answer to the question. And when you cut services, someone has to pay the price. When you cut a day truck, or cut it out completely, you cut that day truck out. We have to use that truck that would have been used for an emergency response to take up the strike at the day truck. So when you pick up a patient and you put them in the back of that truck, now it might be just a routine doctor visit, or it might be dialysis. You can't drop that patient just for causing an emergency comes in on Interstate Forty. If you don't have a truck, you don't have a truck. You have to deliver that patient to his destination. So it don't help to cut the services. Now, I've been on this commission long enough, and I know that there's been times that we've had to put pennies into the ambulance service that helps us with that. It's something that we all, we all need. Honey, I've had ten stents in my heart and I've had a triple bypass, and I hate to think that I would call Tim Suter for an ambulance and somebody is on their way, not that it's not important, but somebody is on their way to a routine doctor's visit, and I'm having a heart attack. We're gambling with people's lives. So we need to fix the problems. And then when the problem seems to, when the boat against the rise in, then we can go back and look at, readjust it. We cut pennies back, we cut pennies in, so let's cut pennies in and quit worrying about how our ambulance service is gonna be funded. It's just as important, that's what he's saying from back there, just as important as a fireman. We need the services. It's not like that.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Commissioner Burr.
Well, how many ambulances do you want us to have? You know, I think that's the question. You can, you, we could have eight ambulances on call, and you couldn't get an ambulance to meet fast enough. In fact, our community already decided, if we're gonna have to need an ambulance, we get in a car and we meet them at, 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 uh, Rocky Top. There's south of the river, you go, go down south of the river down through there, it doesn't matter. We used to have three ambulances. The reason we haven't had to come back to you any more than we have is because it's run very, very well over the years. I just mentioned, we, we had three or four hundred thousand dollars in, in, in an account, uh, with, with cash to the trustee. We can add ambulances, but, Mr. Hookson, you didn't wanna have a tax increase for schools, but we're gonna have one for the ambulance? We can, we can do that, I mean, we've had several that don't wanna increase taxes for anything. We can do that, we put two pennies in, we had two pennies in the, in the, in the, uh, uh, in the, in the current budget, right? Two pennies that we, that we, that we paid, we paid them back, then we had to get them again. So it's a fluctuating kind of thing, uh, I wish we knew the answers to it. We're looking also to save money by doing the in-house building. Right now, we're, we're paying an outside, a building agency, because that got us in trouble the first time. Back in two thousand and ten, we had a horrible situation with building. We weren't, we weren't getting hardly any money because we weren't building right. So we went outside, we changed outside builders twice. We're looking now, in fact, doing a study to try to bring the building in-house to see if we can cut some expenses there. But we're, we're trying everything we can to, to try to cut, to make the ambulance service what it was. We, we've got one of the best ambulance services in, in the state that have been missing. It may be in a couple of months, we have to come to you to keep our four ambulances going. So if we wanna add more than that, we, we, we can do that, we're just, we're just, we're just looking at, again, adding four or six ambulances isn't gonna get everybody an ambulance service in the kind, in the amount of time that it's, that it's gonna take, because the way we're split up in this county, we know it several times, it's, it's, it's hard, it's hard to get to all parts of this county, uh, with emergency vehicles. But that, that, that's where we are. Hopefully, we can, we can come back with in-house building, but that'll save, that'll save us, uh, some money there. So that's where we are, thank you.
All right, chair recognizes, uh, Commissioner Parks.
Yeah, I just, I want, on the record, nobody's advocating to cut ambulance. We're doing what we need to do, we're transferring money over. We're, I don't know where we got lost, and the committee is, is looking, you know, to preserve money. Yeah, that's fair, that's what we need to be doing, but nobody has advocated to cut an ambulance. That's not even been discussed. I did say, you know, there's gonna come a time where we're gonna have to decide for sure if we're gonna fully fund it forever with the property tax money. And, and that, that decision will come, and I think we, we've made clear tonight that we'll support that. But nobody has advocated today, yesterday, or last month to, to cut an ambulance. And we're, we're simply doing what we need to do tonight. We're, we're moving money over, which is what I think you guys want. So that's just me speaking for me and, and the committee, because I feel like the committee's kinda, they're coming after us. And we, we, we just made a motive to, to move money over, you know, and that's what we're doing. That's all I got.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Commissioner Gander.
Yeah, let's vote on this resolution, send this back, send all this to the committee. They're working really hard on this, this is something they suggested, and they're working diligently on it. Let's let them continue. I think we kinda did derail a little bit. I understand everybody's passion on it, we both had to have it, or we will have to have it, so just, but, let's go ahead and vote on this resolution.
All right, you, you stated something to quantify that, you said vote to send it back, we vote.
No, let's, let's vote on this resolution, let the committee work on it, the committee to work on it.
Got it. All right, thank you, sir. Any other discussion, any other debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Court. Motion carries fifteen, thanks for the, uh, debate on that. Uh, so twenty is not pulled, is that correct?
Pretty, I was wrong with the number, I apologize.
Resolution to amend the revenue and expenditures in the one-twenty-one general fund for the, uh, Enbridge fueling, uh, futures grant that has been awarded for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Motion by Dove, second by Dawson, Commissioner Dove.
Uh, this is getting four new defibrillators, uh, for the emergency services, it's a grant, free money.
Commissioner Dawson.
Uh, that go up, Commissioner, I am fed zero dollars for taxpayers, I won't cost them any good. What this is, is gonna do is put some very needed equipment, A D As, and some apparatuses, so if they're out in the community, they've got these pieces, or we didn't have them when they were afforded.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Madam Court. Motion carries fifteen. Resolution ten twenty-five twenty-one, resolution amending the expenditures for the animal control fund, one-twenty-one for the, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six. Mr. Garrett, motion by Dove, second by Wilson. Commissioner Dove.
Uh, this was intended to be ten thousand from the beginning, and some, and it was put in as one thousand, uh, so it's, it is clean up.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Wilson.
Power of the discipline, nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Madam Court. Motion carries fifteen. Resolution twenty, ten twenty-five twenty-two, resolution to reflect change in expenditure in opioid seven, fund one-twenty-seven for twenty-five, twenty-six. twenty-six fiscal year. Motion by, motion by Wilson, second by Henderson. Commissioner Wilson.
This is eighteen thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars. It's going to celebrate recovery at First Baptist Church in Rockwood, used specifically for, uh, that of opioids, uh, if I'm trying to say that right. It, it was specific in nature, so, and they met the criteria.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Fifteen. Resolution ten twenty-five twenty-three, a resolution amending the expenditures in the highway fund one thirty-one for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Motion by Dove, second by Gann. Commissioner Dove.
Uh, this is some adjustments made for insurance, uh, in the highway environment.
Commissioner Gann.
Nothing.
Any discussion, any debate? Madam Clark. Resolution ten twenty-five twenty-four, resolution to reflect changes in the highway fund one thirty-one, and general capital projects fund one seventy-one ARP for the paving project that were approved through the ARP funds on December eighth, twenty twenty-five. Motion by Kirby, second by Henderson. Commissioner Kirby.
Nothing further.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
Alright, any discussion, any debate? Madam Clark. Alright, fifteen. Resolution ten twenty-five twenty-five, resolution, uh, authorizing a budget amendment within the general capital projects fund to transfer funds from one seventy-one balance and one seventy-one CH, uh, J, uh, to provide necessary funding, uh, for the replacement of washer and dryer for the jail. Motion by Wilson, second by Kirby. Commissioner Wilson.
Uh, this is to replace the washer and dryer as it stated it was over ten years old, and it gets used every day. So, expensive washer and dryer, isn't it? But, uh, been through the budget.
Commissioner Kirby.
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Motion carries fifteen. Resolution ten twenty-five twenty-six, a resolution authorizing county executives to apply for the transportation planning grant. Motion by Dove, second by Hamilton. Mr. Dove.
Uh, grant two hundred fifty thousand through, uh, T-DOT. Uh, we have to match it ten percent with the twenty-five thousand to get the two fifty.
Mr. Hamilton.
Nothing further.
Alright, any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clark. Motion carries, uh, fifteen. Resolution ten twenty-five twenty-seven, a resolution to create a new sub-fund and budget, uh, the revenue and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six of general capital projects, uh, fund one seventy-one DSG. Uh, so, motion by Wilson, second by Dove. Commissioner Wilson.
This was free money, and it was pretty easy to apply for, was pretty much guaranteed for the brownfield redevelopment, and twenty-five thousand dollars free money.
Commissioner Dove.
Nothing further.
Clark. Fifteen. Resolution ten twenty-five twenty-eight, a resolution amending the expenditures in the wastewater fund two oh four for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. Motion by Dove, second by Henderson. Commissioner Dove.
It's another insurance adjustment.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Madam Clark. Motion carries. Resolution ten twenty-five twenty-nine, a resolution authorizing the county executives to close all Rome County offices on December the twenty-sixth, uh... That's, uh, Commissioner Berry, Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Berry.
Yes, sir. Uh, courthouse is gonna be closed on Wednesday and Thursday, uh, that week, and, uh, we just thought it'd be, be a nice, nice way for, for our people not to have to come back for, for one day, and, and they can, they can have, have a very nice Christmas vacation. Uh, we also, we also decided that by doing this, we would not give them a thousand dollar bonus, but give them the day off, and, and, and place with the bonus, but, uh, just thought it would be a nice way to say Merry Christmas, sorry for this.
Alright, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, no, I, I, I agree with that as well. Thank you.
Alright, any discussion, any debate? Madam Clark. Alright, motion... Country. New Hoots. Motion carries fifteen. Alright, now, it might understand that was the last resolution from this, because I've got a line through thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two.
Thirty's still on, I believe.
No, it was a duplicate.
Thirty's duplicate, that's, yes, correct, yes.
Alright, any other business coming forward to Rome County Commission? At this time, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright, second. All in favor, say aye.